See him outside and you're like we used to, you know, every time we'd go there, we used to walk across the street and visit with him. But you don't ever see him outside anymore.
You'll be visiting with him socially and say, you know, I'm sorry, John, I can't remember.
All right, everyone, I want to welcome everybody to regular city council meeting. Meeting in order. We've got a certification of a quorum. We'll pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
Bow our heads. Good evening, Father. We thank you so much for this city. We thank you for all the blessings of life that you so richly give to us for life itself. We just pray your blessing upon this evening, uh, meeting. And this evening, Father, I'd like to publicly pray, even though I know I pray often privately, for the ladies of our town, our city, that have stepped up to the plate, have taken positions, and name them, and it is, it is not that if I miss someone, Father, that I'm not praying for them as well, but for our city manager, Courtney Sladek, our secretary and assistant secretary, Kaylee Cudella, and Carrie Walagura, for Crystal Hasselmeier, Michelle Roy, our judge, and Carolyn Gibson, Father. These ladies have stepped up to the plate to take the brunt sometimes of the public. And this evening, I just want to pray for them, uh, that they would have, understand where their strength comes from. Father, that they seek after you first in the Kingdom of God, that all power, all wisdom can be given to them. Father, for all the ladies of our town in whatever capacity, for the mothers in our homes, that you would just bless the ladies, the women of our community. Father, this evening, as we sit here and we make decisions, we ask that you would give us as a council to the city wisdom, and that we would respect the positions that these women hold, and understand that they are asking us to give our insight and input, and that we would do that with humility and with wisdom that comes from above. Father, I pray that this town, this city, would continue to prosper beyond all of our imaginations, and that your blessing would be upon us. And we ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to item number four, special recognition, uh, recognition to the O'Campbell MS.
I won't take much of your time. Um, this is, I think, either the third or fourth time we've presented this to y'all, but I wanted to get back in front of y'all that once again, this year, we've been awarded the Mission Lifeline Award from the American Heart Association.
Awesome.
Um, this is for doing great care in our stroke and our STEMI care. They measure things such as pre-arrival notification of stroke, um, doing, making sure we're doing stroke screens. We're doing 12 leads and under, uh, EKG in under 10 minutes, and then notifying the hospital when we're en route to them. Um, so just once again, we're meeting all the guidelines to get this award.
Awesome.
Great. Jared, thank y'all very much. Uh, we, we know what you and your team does, and, uh, we appreciate everything that y'all do.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations.
All right, this time, we're gonna move into public comments. Um, we don't have any today, so I'm just gonna go ahead and move on. Item number six, our consent agenda. Approval of our city council workshop, uh, June the ninth, 2025, at 5:00 PM, and then, uh, again, approval of city council regular meeting, June the ninth, at 6:00 PM.
May I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
We got a motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor? Motion passes. Thank y'all. All right, item number seven. Um, consideration of action on item number one, resolution R 2025 dash 31, awarding real estate appraisal services for the CBDG MIT Trespolachus Creek Drainage Improvements Project at National Appraisal Partners LLP in an amount not to exceed $119,600, and authorizing the city manager or designated to execute all related documents or amendments.
Yeah, and so it begins, this is the, the first step of the acquisition process for the 52 easements we need along the Trespolachus Creek to secure, um, access so that we can complete this project. We know that 20 of these properties have to be appraised, uh, could be more if, uh, number one, the, uh, property owner requests the appraisal, or number two, the appraisals have gone up since we began this grant process. Uh, so we have it not to exceed $119,600. That would be for all. That's $2,300 is an appraisal. If we only do the, the 20, that comes in at $46,000. Again, this is funded with that grant that you received in the amount of 14.8 million. And, uh, tonight, we're asking you to approve this resolution, which would allow us to retain National Appraisal Partners, uh, to perform this service for us.
Got a question?
Sure.
So anytime that I see a not to exceed number, uh, it, it's, to me, it's obvious that it could be less than?
Yes.
Right?
That's right. It's a ceiling.
So, so how is that incremented? And i- is it just by the?
It's based on the number of appraisals.
Okay.
Mayor, I make a motion. We approve resolution 2025 dash 31.
Do I need to go to the mail?
It's included in the resolution.
Okay.
It's in the resolution, yeah. I'll second it.
We got a motion and a second on the floor?
Discussion.
Discussion.
Go ahead.
Courtney, the only question I have is, um, it says the appraisal will be delivered within five weeks of engagement. Is that five weeks per property or five weeks to do all 20 parcels?
It's five weeks of property.
Five weeks per property. And that's time of the essence in this deal?
Time is of the essence in this deal.
And, but, but that five weeks per property, it'll go faster than I think.
We think so, too.
But that's acceptable to you?
Yes.
Okay.
My question was, are indemnification of these people against any lawsuits, uh, or, uh, questions of their work and their $400 an hour charge person, uh, if they have to go to court to testify? And I don't know if that's just to back up their appraisal, or if that's, uh, some, if that's also what they're gonna charge us, uh, during any indemnification process. Maybe our attorney can fill us in on that.
Yeah, I, I think the, the court charge is to come testify to support their appraisals if we get into a combination proceeding and when we have to go to the commissioner's hearing. So I believe that's what that charge is for. Um, as far as the indemnification, uh, I, I don't ever like indemnification. I really don't think you can indemnify them anyway as a governmental entity. I think that's against the Constitution.
You don't think the law will allow us to?
I don't think it will allow us to indemnify them anyway, honestly. But I think they're, what they're looking for is something to protect them if they have to go on the property and, and something happens with the property owner. But I, I don't see that as being an issue on this one, as far as.
Okay, but it could be.
It's always possible. But again, I think.
I mean, we could get into a hell of a mess, uh, indemnifying them against any and all, uh, questions.
You, you could, but again, I think because of the state law prohibition against governmental entities indemnifying, I think we're pretty good on that.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? We got a motion and a second. All in favor? Resolution passes? Motion passes. Moving on to item number two, purchase of, uh, Timco Model 600 regenerative air sweeper in amount of $356,550 in financing through First Financial Bank at four and a half percent, uh, fixed rate, fixed interest rate, uh, for five years.
And upon approval of this, this does do two things. It authorizes us to make the purchase. Number one, and number two, it secures the financing through First Financial at four and a half percent, which was the most competitive rate, uh, amongst the banks. This will replace your current 2020 street sweeper whose final payment is being made sometime.
I think it's December.
December of this year. So we have to place this order. It, they will not overlap. Uh, we will be selling the current street sweeper, and any of those proceeds will be used to pay off of this, this loan. Uh, but the life of a street sweeper is about five years, and that's why we're requesting the, the Timco.
How long will it take it to get in?
How long? Kevin?
It can take, uh, up to a year.
Yeah, that's.
So rather than when we just patched you.
Yep. While we're starting now.
How does the, uh, the new payment compare to the old payment?
Okay, I, I had a feeling you were gonna ask that, and, and this is what happens in five years, folks. Our current payment is $44,881 annually. Our next, our future payment as proposed in here, without, without any proceeds from the sale is $81,291 a year. It, it, it jumped quite a bit in five years.
So I'm reading five and a quarter percent on this.
It's, Brittany, do you wanna support?
A June 13th letter from Brittany.
Five point five.
No, no, that's, excuse me. That's the wrong bank.
Yeah, it's the.
It's your bank.
Yeah.
First Financial.
I didn't look at the headlines. I mean, I just saw the interest rate.
Yeah, there's the table, so you can see the, the rates.
There's your five.
And we reached out to the credit union for the first time just to see what, what their rates would look like. And this is with nothing, uh, down unless you went with Timco.
Kevin, just generally, what, what is, what's our used machine worth? I'm sorry. What's, what's the used machine worth? If you had to guess?
Uh, Timco has told me they, they've seen upwards of 50% of the cost of the machine, upwards of, depending upon how well it's taken care of, which is when having it taken care of very well.
What's the market for that? Do you sell it yourself? Do you reach out to?
We put through grab deals, uh, and we've been very successful with it.
Great, thank you.
So one other question I had, is this, is this something that's kinda hitting us by surprise, or are we expecting the every-five-years type deal?
Every five years, that's why.
Because it's kind of interesting. We, we, we finish the payment and we're getting another payment.
Yeah.
That's, that doesn't meet the gut check of good thing to do, but if it is what it is, if we're burning them up that much, it is what it is, and that's the cost of doing business. But.
It's the same thing. You're getting equity back because it is still in good, it's a maintenance hog. There is no doubt about it.
Fair. Okay. That's the biggest reason you're wanting to get another one is because of the amount of maintenance dollars you're putting into it, out of the old and in budget.
When we sell that one, we roll it into the equity?
Yes.
So we pay it off for four or five years, probably.
Yes.
Or lower payment.
Or lower payment, yeah.
So, so here's another question with that. Who buys these other, who buys these used sweepers?
Other municipalities, smaller municipalities.
Okay, small, that would make, that would make sense.
Private, private people. Thank you.
Mayor, I move to approve, um, I'm on the new agenda. I don't know how to do the.
The purchase of the.
Okay. Uh, I, I move to approve the purchase of a Timco Model 600 as presented and to finance at First Financial Bank.
I second the motion.
We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Thank you.
He already.
Item number three.
Yep.
Purchase of two marked police units in amount not to exceed $143,000.
And we disclosed at the last budget workshop that we did not have these included in the proposed budget, and that is partially intentional because you're looking at a tax rate increase more than likely because of sales tax. So we didn't want to add on another 143,000. Important to note, Chief, before you speak, that financial impact, uh, this was asked by Councilmember Hodges. At the end of last year, you finished with a fund balance of 3.745 million. You've brought back 1.554. We're still expecting some of those funds, uh, aren't included in that number, but your, your total, your fund balance, uh, with those two is 5.299 million. You're required to carry a balance of 3.199 million. So it's right at 3.2. So subtracting out, uh, this 143,000 will not put you anywhere near, uh, the, below that threshold that you're required to reserve. And that required reserve, that 3.199, that's in there to cover you in case of hurricanes. So that's why it sits there, or disasters. And so that's why you will always carry a balance of that. But anything over that, and in this case, it's, it's a little over 2 million, you have to spend on one-time purchases, and that's how historically you've done that. And so that's what we're requesting today, is to replace a 2021 Tahoe with 90,000 miles and, uh, get an additional vehicle, two Ford Explorers. And Chief, I'm stealing your thunder.
That's okay.
Taking away from.
You can steal it all. That's okay.
From, from whatever you want to tell them about these purchases. I'll he, I'll hand it over.
Well, first, I, I want to thank council and, and, and the city manager, because when I took over as chief, uh, two years ago, this was really a big, big concern of mine because we had a lot of aging vehicles. We had a lot of issues with maintenance. Since that time, we've, we've improved a lot. However, we, we, my goal eventually, and I'll tell you now, is, is with this one, if you approve both of these units, I'll, I'll get rid of one that we really need to get rid of because we have a lot of issues with it, maintenance-wise and, and mileage-wise. And then I want to add the other because the way we currently stand is, is we have seven vehicles available as patrol units for shifts. And our minimum each day is, is we, we have six people working minimum, sometimes more, you know. So if we have a car out, that means some of these cars are getting driven 24 hours in a day on a pretty regular basis. So my goal is to eventually get two more units in that fleet. This will accomplish one of them. Obviously, I'm not gonna do it all at once, but hopefully by, by next budget year, we may have one that we need to replace and another one to add to the fleet, uh, because of all the downtime and, and it just, we're getting there. And, and thanks to you, because, because we've, we've been, our, our mileage on, on some of the remaining vehicles, we're down to like 22,000 miles on one, 31,000 on another, uh, only 57 on another. So we're, we're getting to that point where we don't have the high mileage on these. I'm expecting that you're gonna see any time after about 80,000. I mean, I hate to say this, but I've been along for us a long time. We used to go 100,000, but they just don't last. Uh, when, when we hit about 80,000, we, we start seeing really major issues on, on maintenance. And so, uh, we're, we're trying to, you know, keep them as long as we can, and, and this will accomplish replacing one that we need to replace and giving me one more in that fleet so we're not using them 24/7, uh, because that's, that's one of the major concerns. And, and again, I've looked at the surrounding, uh, we can't really compare with the county because their mileage is different. They're driving open roads, and, and, and your officers here, it's just constant idling, uh, short distances, uh, in the heat. Heat kills us, and we gotta keep it running because of the computers. So, so it's, it's, everything's kind of cumulative effect on it. But this, this will get us, uh, one step further to, I think, where, where we need to be with, with the vehicle situation with, and again, I, I really want to thank you because this has improved drastically over the last two years. Uh, we've, we've gotten quite a, a, a great support from you.
Chief, that 71,308, is that tripped out? Is that ready to go?
Yes, ready to go.
That's a fully.
The only, the only thing I'm gonna pay for out of my budget is a, a, a printer because the other, one of we have is kind of outdated, so it's not in that. But everything else is completely done for both of these vehicles. We had enough to, to, to furnish it. Because they, they had some more vehicles in the past. They got behind, I think, during COVID. So, you know, they, we had some equipment sitting there that we can use, so we don't have to buy some of the extra equipment. And I can still outfit this other, this other vehicle, the, the newer vehicle, the one that's not being.
Chief, will they be white?
Yes. They'll be marked like the newer vehicles, the new, the markings, and they'll be explorers. Uh, you know, we like Tahos, but you can't get them. They're still, they won't give us a date. The, these two are, are there. We can buy them. Now, the only issue is, it's gonna take probably six months to get them outfitted, because that's where the wait time is now. We go to these outfitters and it, and you're, you're, you're a number. And so I'm guessing, uh, lucky four months, probably more like six months, even though the vehicle's available.
Chief, do we have, uh, do we have a good line of sight on, uh, capital assets as we go forward? Like, I'm talking like 10 years out. Like, do we know about how much we're, when we're gonna spend on a, on a cruiser and when, you know, as we go out into the years? And the reason I ask that is, these come up and, and obviously, we want to support them, but at the same time, it'd be nice to properly budget for them as we go forward.
Are you looking for like a fleet schedule?
Yeah, like, like, because.
Can include that in the adopted budget?
Yeah, yeah. And, and I know, and I, and to your point, Courtney, earlier, I understood where we were with the budget and sales tax and all that. I get all that.
Yeah.
But, but if we can put it out there far enough, maybe we can see it and say, hey, we need a couple of cruisers in 2034 or whatever, and then it's out there and you can kinda, kinda halfway plan for it.
Well, add that to the budget document. Uh, Blake's asked for that before.
Yeah.
So we can include that.
Because these, you may put a couple of them in every other year or however you wanna do it.
At least you know it's coming.
Yeah, because you kinda know how much, how many miles you kinda burn.
Right. And what we normally, what I, in the past, uh, where I've had this in, in different organizations is.
Right.
We'll, we'll set a standard. Right now, I'm, I'm using kind of the 80,000 mile standard because that's what we're seeing as far as the wear and tear.
Right.
And then you, you, you kind of also then, uh, I can't say to you, we may have one that's 80,000, we're not having issues with. So, so usually what happened is, we'll give you like, this would be the obsolescence date on that item, and then we replace it. But then each year, we would still do an assessment on that.
Yes.
So it may not be that we replace every one of those. Or, or we may have one that jumped up and we start, and I can tell you, I don't, I, I don't wanna be against Dodge, but I don't buy Dodge products, because even our brand new one that we just got, we didn't have it a month and a half, had to put a whole new transmission in it.
Oh, no.
And we didn't have to pay for it. It was, it was under warranty.
Right.
But it's, it's very frustrating.
It was down.
And that, it's down. So then, it was down for like two months. So, so that's what, what we're facing on, on the, on that side of it.
Fair enough.
I know you said the Ford versus the Chevy. The Chevy's a little bigger, but maintenance-wise, they're comparable?
I had, I, they've had some explorers in the past, and they had, didn't have issues with them.
Who does the maintenance locally?
Yes. Uh, now, we did the Dodge. We had to send somewhere else because the backlog for them. That's the only issue we ever face is sometimes they're, they're swamped with it, or the parts availability. Uh, and that's one of the issues. I'm, I'm not buying Dodges right now is because I've had a lot of, we've had a lot of pain, uh, over the last, since I've been here on those vehicles. Uh, and again, uh, I, I agree with you. I think it'd be great if we had this deal, but then by the same token, it, it's always gonna be a, a flexible document.
I understand.
Because of funding or whatever else it is. And, and I understand that. And I tell my people that because I don't want them thinking, oh, it's guaranteed you're gonna get this car, you're gonna get that. The reality is, it's gonna be based upon an assessment of that vehicle at that time and funding availability.
I like the fact that we're gonna pay for this out of fund balance, and, uh, like you said, we're gonna have to go up on, on tax anyway. So this'll lessen the load.
Yeah.
And I want people to understand that, that we're doing everything we can to not, to not have to go up as.
Yeah.
What we need to.
You got it.
That's correct.
Yep. Anybody like to make a motion on this?
Mayor, I make a motion to approve purchase of two marked police units in the amount of not to exceed $143,000.
Got a motion on the floor?
Did he say, did he say two?
Yes.
I think it needs to be 143.
From the total.
That's what I said.
That's what he said.
I'm sorry. Apologize. I thought I said two.
Right. And I'll second that.
We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
All right, we're gonna move on to item number four.
Uh, I think it gets easier from here, folks.
Rejecting or accepting bids of professional audit services?
We opened bids for a new audit firm, and we received one, uh, from KMNL, which is the local. We have no problem with KMNL, but we do have a problem receiving only one bid. Uh, staff request that council rejects this bid and allows us to rebid this and bring it back to you in July. July?
End of July.
End of July, because we only have one bid.
Mayor, I move to reject the auditing bid from KMNL.
We got a motion on the floor to reject the bid?
I'll second.
And a second? Any further discussion?
I have a, I have a question.
Yeah.
How do you get more bids? What's the?
We think that we need more runway time. Uh, we, we put it out for bid, and there was only three week time. And so we'll be giving them around six weeks at this, this next round. And that's what other cities are having to do. They used to respond in three weeks, and these days, it's taken them six weeks. We had a lot of interest. Oh, and we hope KMNL will rebid. Uh, this is nothing against them. It's just that we only had one.
And y'all let them know that, right?
We'll let them know that, sure.
Okay. All right, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor? Rejecting a bid? Motion passes. All right, item number five, rejecting or accepting bids, uh, construction of CDVGMITMOD Southside Drainage Improvements Project.
And this is a 100% funded grant project in the amount of 1.554 million, but that includes administration and engineering. So you have about a $1.2 million construction budget on, on this particular project. We received the bids on June 6. There were two bids. Staff is requesting that you reject this bid, these bids as well. One bid was submitted by ConStar with a 10% contingency, the other by Matt Agorda, who is working on your Trespola, uh, Town and Country project. It did not include that. So there's a, there's a difference in there, the discrepancy in there, which may compromise the integrity of the procurement process because it violates the pro, uh, principles of fairness and transparency. So that could, uh, be problematic as this is a federally funded grant. Uh, so we're asking that you reject these bids, and we go out to bid on this project as well. We have cleared this with the general land office and our grant consultant, by the way. And our, our, our consultant is recommending that you reject these bids.
All right.
Mayor, I make a motion to reject the construction of CDVG-MITMOD Southside Drainage Improvement Project.
I'll second that.
We got a motion and a second on the floor, rejecting a bid. Any questions? Any further discussion?
Yes, I do. So, uh, I know a little bit about what happened here, and I think it's wise to do what we're doing. Um, the, the caution I have with all of this is that the numbers that are out there have been seen.
Yes.
So if, if the, I'm assuming that the city is going to alter it a little bit, maybe bring something into the scope or remove something to the scope so that we don't have.
The same numbers?
This, well, and, and/or, it's not coercion, but I'm just saying, now we know and now, and, so what is the plan on that?
We, we did rework the bid, removed some of the utility items because it was not a utility project. It's a drainage project. We had those removed and a few other issues that needed to be tweaked as well.
Okay. And, and is this another one of the project? How many bids did we receive? I know there was a lot of packets picked up, but how many? Just two?
Two, two bids, uh, upwards of 20 packets were picked up.
What would be incredible is if we have more bids. And then, and the, the two that bid know they're still competing against other people bidding, which they won't know until, anyways, until it's open.
Correct. Unfortunate, but yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion pass. All right, item number six, approval.
Okay.
Of phased 50/50 partnership funding for critical infrastructure investment.
Let me start by saying that tonight I will not be asking for your approval. So we will, I will not be asking for any action on this. We met with the CDC today at two, at their two o'clock meeting, and they, you have received unanimous support for a partnership on these projects that will be included in the report that comes to you through Matt Blais, but the commitment for the amount of money hasn't been made yet. Uh, but they did want to let you know that they are planning to partner with you. Historically, they've partnered 50/50. Um, these projects will be phased in. They will not all happen at once. These are pro, these are projects that affect commercial locations. They include San Biskin Road, uh, the lift station at San Biskin, which is undersized, in my opinion, for potential growth and, and need some work. Um, also, it's sewer lines that, and water lines that affect your commercial districts and businesses. And, uh, some pro, two projects specifically, specifically address future growth. And those are the, the projects that we will be partnering on. They're included in the report that you're gonna receive later tonight. At this time, no action. We will be bringing it back to you with firm numbers and a schedule on when we will be doing those. But first, we want you to be able to have the plan, digest it. No action on your CIP tonight. You're just receiving the report, and we will be bringing this back to discuss it with you and talk about how we plan to work with the CDC to get these projects funded. So no actions required. But I, I can answer, Carolyn and I can answer any questions you may have about this particular item. If there's not, we can.
Anybody have any questions on it? If not, uh, the staff will bring it back to us.
Yep.
At a later time.
Are you good with that?
All right, item number seven, we're gonna, we had a couple councilmen that were absent, uh, last. We're going to, we had a couple of councilmen that were absent last meeting, so we're going to get their grievance board appointments from Mr. Hancock and Mr. Wallace.
I'll nominate Jody Erwin.
Jody Erwin, yes, sir.
And I'll nominate Derek Bodum.
Okay.
And I'll provide the details to Kaylee Cudella.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Presentation on El Campo Capital Improvement Plan, or CIP.
And MacLays, our engineer with Urban Engineers, will be distributing a copy of the capital plan.
Thank you.
And offering a very brief emphasis on brief presentation. Not a presentation. He will be offering some thoughts on what he has prepared for you to digest. Again, reminder, you're, you're just, no, that, that wasn't the reminder, but I'm glad, I'm glad you kept that in mind. You are not taking any action on this today. This is for you to, in the words of David, David Hodges, I like to see it at a meeting and then make a decision later. So we, we're bringing it to you for you to have a chance to kind of inspect and then we'll, we'll work with it as we continue to build our budget. The floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. So appreciate this opportunity to prepare this capital improvement plan for y'all. It started out thinking we were going to have 10 or 15 projects and we ended up with a list of about 32. That includes various projects that keep Kevin awake at night and we've accounted for those mostly water and sewer that I think keep him awake at night, but you also have all the street projects that y'all are probably well aware of. I'm not going to go through them in, in detail. If you have a question on one, please feel free to ask. But that's pretty much where we have. We went through it with the staff, identified them, we put together cost estimates for them and then actually the next page has them out. The top bunch of them are, are ones that the CDC may participate in, are available to because they're in business districts. And then as we go through the rest of them, it's just water and sewer, street work, some park work in there that goes through that.
If you can back up a little bit, can, can you explain the priorities? You got the ones and twos?
The priorities were given by staff for the things that mostly, like I said, keep Kevin awake at night. Some sewer lines and water lines that have collapsed or they've worked on many times in the past or, you know, they don't sleep, wondering if this one's going to fail next week when it dries out or, or things like that. So those are the big keys to these is, is the ones that we, we identified that have known issues or potentially known issues.
Yeah, the ones are zero to five years, the twos are five to tens, the threes are 10 to 15s and then the fours are, are further out.
So, so one, one question I guess I would have is that, so priority ones, we've got upwards of over $20 million with priority ones and you're talking zero to five years, right?
Correct.
Thirty, probably one that they don't add the.
Yeah, it's the two added together.
Participating ones.
Oh, okay.
So, well.
Oh, okay, okay.
You got around 20, I guess if you don't.
Yeah, I just, yeah, throwing that out there, but, but I guess my point is, is some of the priority ones, like, like one with, with exclamation or something, to be able to say, how do we, you know, because there's a lot of projects here and I'm not saying, you know, we need to do them all. I mean, but eventually.
Well, what we will be bringing.
It's just going to be tough to prioritize them, is what I'm saying.
Yeah. What we will be bringing back to you and we've already, we've already completed is the pro forma, which debt item puts them by year and by funding source.
Okay.
And how you're going to pay for it. We have that, but we didn't want.
That would fall into your statement about the police cars also.
Yes, sir. Yeah.
We didn't want to overwhelm you tonight with that schedule.
Right.
In addition to this, we thought we'll start the projects and we'll bring that back to you. And, you know, full disclosure, this will require some debt issuance. The good news is you have some available funds left over from the 24 issuance that you can use for, on some of these priority ones. And so we'll be bringing those back to you July 14.
And then, and then the numbers you, you got in here, Matt, are they, are they like plus 30% or something like that or what kind of?
We, we think they're pretty, pretty solid for today.
Okay.
With, with.
Today's.
We've got some buffer in them, yes.
Okay, so we, so based on the years, we'd have to escalate those.
I would think if you get into the long range project, you're going to need to add some too.[1657.41]